But. Remove any member of the public from the meeting that doesn't use a full name or hacks inappropriately. We are using Zoom for this meeting. It's a hybrid meeting. Which allows for the public to participate in the meeting as an attendee. Let's see, attendees will join in listening mode. They can click a raise hand button if they wish to ask a speak when we do allow public comment or questions. And I will try to appropriately call on folks who have raised their hands in the order that they were raised. All questions should be directed through me, the chair. Confirming member access is a preliminary matter. This is Joe Brown, Chair of the Town Council Study Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members of the committee, when I call your name, please respond with an affirmative. Jeff Carlson? Here. Donna?
Here.
Curtis?
Hi.
Kelly?
Here.
Carolyn?
Here.
Bo? Jill?
Here.
Did I miss anybody else? Oh. Rachel? No.
Tom.
Oh, Tom. Hey, Tom.
Hey, here.
There are no staff members here today. Anticipated speakers, I think the only one who's here at the moment is Leslie?
Yeah.
You're here, okay. And we will, we will skip this when the other folks connect later on. Let's see. Good afternoon. This open meeting of the Town Council Study Committee is being conducted on a hybrid basis pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three. Ensuring public access does not ensure, does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment and questions. For this meeting, the Town Council Study Committee is convening by video conference as well as in-person attendance. As posted on the town's website, which identified how the public may join. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body or will be distributed during the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. See. I can skip back to the rest of our, um. We've called the order. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda, please? Going around the room, Jeff?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Okay, Rachel? Okay. We know that you said yes. Curtis?
Yes, I.
Kelly?
Hi.
Carolyn? Bo? Jill? And Joe? Hi. Did everybody get a chance to see? We did. We were just talking about the minutes. So we're gonna, can we have, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
With great joy.
I think Sean Todd's, Blase Murphy's name just needs cleanup.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that, yeah.
Okay, can I have a second then? Motion, I guess, to approve as edited? Jeff? Okay, I think we got all the motions. I think so. Jeff?
Hi.
Rachel? She's muted. Okay, Tom?
Hi.
Thank you. Curtis?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Carolyn?
Hi.
Bo? Jill? Joe? Hi. I think that was it. The first sort of three quarters of our meeting today. Oh, and I guess I should also welcome Anthony and the folks from the Collins Center. Thank you, guys, for being on and I'll, we will let you sort of listen in until we get to through the presenters and then we'll get to your part of the presentation, alright? Okay, and Nancy Holmes, I see that you're on there, so thank you, Nancy, for joining us.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
We're gonna, we're gonna follow the agenda and ask Leslie to chat first and then we'll go to you, Nancy, and then Denise, I assume, will show up. Some plus, sometime closer to three forty-five. So Leslie Snell, can you, you want to come and join us here?
Board members coming. What was happening?
Take everyone's here. To the mother. Introduce everyone to Leslie Snell, our Director of Planning, and here in the town. And Leslie, I gave you some questions and some thoughts about what we're looking for, so can I just turn it over to you?
Sure.
Will you, will you tell us what you think?
Yeah, so Joe gave me five questions and the first one was what works, what's good about open town meeting? I've always been a big proponent of town meeting. I think that, you know, promotes a lot of community involvement. I, I think that it, you know, is a great form of government. Res zoning articles, having to get two-thirds of the people sitting there to vote and say, yes, that's a good idea, is a high. And I think it really means a lot if you can get the people to agree with you. You know, town government is our legislative body of the town and respect for that. But I do think the next question is what does it doesn't work so well? I think as a community, we may have outgrown that. Just in the past, like several years, I've noticed that the complexity of the issues facing our community, the complexity of the articles are such that, you know, a lot of people attending may not have the time to put into it. They may not have the educational background to really understand what's, you know, in front of them. And you know, I think things that have been in front of town meeting could have maybe gone a different way if it was in front of a smaller group that had more time to ask questions, and more time to do research, and more time to really consider what was in front of them. I'm, you all may not know this, but I'm from the Midwest, from the South, sort of. And the council form of government is not unusual to me. It's the open town meeting that I found unusual and interesting twenty-two years ago. So I think one thing about town meeting, you know, you have to plan around, you know, meeting once a year for anything to get authorization. If you forget something or something comes up throughout the year, you have to wait for it, which I think, you know, zoning is always not that important, but for financial articles or for infrastructure that may need financing or real estate matters that come up. Those are all time-sensitive matters that, you know, the annual process is difficult to work around at times. What are the voters in Nantucket value? I mean, as a voter, not as, you know, Director of Planning, like, I really like that, you know, I can go and I can participate in things that, you know, as a resident, I'm affected, not something that's directly related to my position. I think it's great that, you know, people have an opportunity to do that. People have an opportunity to stand up and speak, but you could do that in other forums as well. You know, if you go to public hearings, you could go to council meetings if it was a council. So I think that, you know, it may not make that much of a difference one way or another. I don't know about what problems might arise. I think people may feel somewhat disenfranchised by not having the town meeting form of government. That would be a huge change, I think, for a lot of people who haven't experienced something else somewhere else. Or just really love New England open town meeting. But I think, you know, there are a lot of benefits, you know, timing-wise, again, like being able to have more time and a different schedule to that, like a lot of the issues that, you know, come in front of town meeting have to be decided, you know, then and there on the spot. That may be the Finance Committee or the Planning Board or Coastal Resiliency or some other committees put a lot of time into, but the people who are sitting there voting are maybe hearing it for the first time. So that's sort of my thoughts.
Well, before I say hi, are there quite questions from the group?
What, what percentage of your time do you and your staff spend getting ready for town meeting? Then receiving maybe, you know, answering questions about it, like covering all the town meeting articles that go forward, because we have a lot every year.
Right.
So I mean, bulk of this year, don't we, I think, outside of the town? And have you thought about if it, if there was a town council, mayor council, like, would that actually increase your workload? Or do you think it might just make it more consistent? Or, you know, do you have any thoughts about the percentage of time that would go into that? Because the way I understand it, the way Curtis has described it to me is like, I could just come to you on a Monday and say, hey, I want to subsidize my property. And then you would say, oh, okay, well, you know, here's what you have to do, fill out this form, and then we're gonna go to the planning board and then they're gonna take, you know, and that'll be on the agenda, whatever. And then from there, it'll go on to town council. And I, I think that's kind of how I understand.
I would hope.
That's how it would work. Like, would it create more work for you? Or do you, you know, I guess we just don't know, but we don't know about that.
Um, I think the scenario that you described, we don't know, like how many people would suddenly come in and say, oh, now there's an easy way for me to go through the process.
I only have to talk to five people instead of seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah. But in terms of the workload, I think it would just be more dispersed throughout the year instead of all crammed into like a smaller timeframe. So, for instance, before, before the, maybe after the warrant was closed for this upcoming annual, I already had a folder started for the next annual of things that either didn't need to move forward now or things we'd overlooked. It was too late to bring up and they weren't time-sensitive. So we never really stopped preparing for town meeting. It's throughout the year. You know, things are coming up. We have a list going, at least in my office, all the time of, you know, ideas and what people bring forward. So it's always in the back of our mind. We're going through the bylaw. Ooh, I see something that needs to be fixed. So go flag on it. I see something else that needs to be fixed, or, oh, I always thought that made sense, but now someone's read it a different way. And now that needs to be addressed. So there's always, you know, always things that are happening, aside from citizens coming in and having their own ideas about what they would like to advance. Kind of lost my train of thought for a second. So I would think we start like the, the heavy work maybe in September, October. And that goes through, you know, whenever the final warrant of motions is adopted, and then there's a little break and then town meeting. So I would say six months out of the year, a lot of our time is spent on that. And for some of us, you know, we're involved in zoning, but a lot of other things that are in the warrant as well. So some people spend, you know, a lot more time.
Joy. Question?
Sure.
I've always noticed that it appears that a third of our warrant is, tends to be zoning, a quarter to a third. And I'm just wondering if that couldn't be handled separately in a different way, even if we kept open town meeting? Is there a way not to be, we have, you know, a hundred and ten pages of a warrant and, and all, and the unfortunate thing, as I see it, is we print the article and then we print it again with planning's recommendation. We print it again with FinCom's recommendation, and that takes this and makes it this. So I'm just wondering, on the zoning side itself, could we streamline that in any way?
Well, I mean, that would be up to the Select Board to decide ultimately. That could be done at a different town meeting, which has been discussed numerous times, but the general consensus seems to be that people like it at the annual. So it's just, that's why we've always done it, you know? But it doesn't have to be done that way. There's nothing that says it has to be on the agenda for the annual. The way that the motions are printed in the warrant is, you know, really at the discretion of, I guess, the Select Board, Town Council, and the Town Manager, how they think it's best. But other towns do their warrants in different ways. Others don't repeat the motion. They just say, you know, motion to adopt as printed in the warrant. Some towns put maps in their article. I mean, we could do it different ways. It would just need to be explored. But it could definitely be simplified.
It's interesting, because I got the Vineyard Gazette. And here is the entire warrant for all of Marcus Vineyard on those two pages. And as you say, they don't print three times. They just say recommended it and goes that way, but I was fascinated. I get this weekly to see what they're doing over in the other island. And this, this week's had the whole fully warrant in two pages for five towns.
And that, that goes for.
Microscope to read it, though, Chris.
Well, you know, frankly, most people don't read what's in our warrant anyway, so.
I have a few citizens I get the call from the, the week of town meeting. Leslie, can you go through the whole warrant with me? Okay, that's what I'm like, do not, not call stuff, sure.
Right. Right, like you're actively working with the time.
Yeah.
So you're trying to make it, trying to inform people as much as you can.
Yeah, but Curtis' question goes not to just zoning. I mean, we don't have to do the motions the way they're done now. And we have to clearly make it obvious, like, if there are changes, for the ones that are adopt as printed, those don't have to be reprinted. It's just the way we do it here. So that could be changed.
Howdy. Um, other questions heard, Leslie?
So from your perspective, that confusion that happens on town meeting floor, when there's the, that artistic thing that happens, the amendments and the, the, all the machinations, that seems to upset people. It's exciting. It's the way it works, but it feels like it makes it less accessible for people. And from your point of view, how, what are some other ideas that you would have about how to streamline it based on what we have now?
Well, I mean, I think you have to work with what we have now, which is the process where people can come to town meeting and, and learn as they go at times and make suggested changes to motions. I mean, I think the biggest thing is, you know, educating the public and getting, you know, the, the message out there as much as possible. You know, you have to have a public that's receptive to that. You can't make people listen. Like with the planning articles, starting in, I don't know, when, maybe two thousand five, we started doing a mailing, but you can't do this for all the articles. It doesn't make sense for all the articles. But for some of the planning board articles, specifically the map changes, we do a courtesy mailing to anyone who's directly affected and say, here's what we're proposing. Here's when we're gonna schedule the public hearing. If you have concerns, here's the staff person to contact. We'd like to work with you in advance. And that's made a huge impact. But when it's an article that affects the whole town, you know, that does have to work. So I think just, you know, trying to educate, educate, educate is probably the best that you can do. You know, several times, the planning office has sponsored like a pre-town meeting workshop. We've offered free pizza, all kinds of things. And no one ever shows up. So that's long since gone by the wayside, but, you know, it's hard to get people engaged. They're busy. They're working with things to do that. You know, we're doing it full-time. They're not doing it full-time.
Which department seems to spend the most amount of time educating or outreach to engage in the voters?
Yeah, I, I couldn't even guess who spends the most time on that.
I think, can I get up on the answer? I think it depends on the article.
Yeah.
And what's going on.
That's true.
Which department? Because I mean, obviously, for planning and zoning articles, planning and zoning.
Yeah.
If there's an article where it's, you know, expansion of, like, large-scale expansion of sewer districts, or like, when they sewer Montemoy and Shimmel, a lot of that was a lot of public outreach from the Sewer Department and Town Admin. So I, I think it really, I think it'd be almost impossible to say this department does the most. That makes sense. Very much driven by, by what's happened.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, short-term rentals has taken up a lot of time, but that ended up being planning and the Select Board and, and the Board of Health, and everybody had to jump in on that. So it's just kind of happened.
Yeah.
Quick one, Leslie. Could you give, uh, give us a little, a little description and explanation of the MP and EDC and how that? It's technically not part of, you know, the sort of town government, right? It's kind of a standalone entity. That's technically who you work for. But not everyone who works in the Plus Department is, are actually town employees. So one of the things we have to think about is if we actually do go to a town charter, a town council forum, we have to kind of, kind of map that over and, and, you know?
Okay.
So could you sort of tell us how that works a little bit?
So the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission is one of thirteen regional planning agencies designated by the state. They have their own enabling legislation that was adopted in nineteen seventy-three. It's been amended a few times. They are not a regulatory agency. They're advisory. In other cases, the Regional Planning Agency provides services to multiple towns. In our case, obviously, no one town. So we function a little bit differently than the other RPAs. The Planning Commission has three employees that are contract employees, the Planning Director, the Deputy Director, and the Transportation Program Manager. So those three positions have contracts with the Planning Commission, but those three positions also provide services to the town of Nantucket for their municipal planning functions. So everyone else that works in Plus, in the Building Division, in the Planning Division, zoning board of appeals, Historic District Commission, Energy Coordinator, I think that's it. They are all technically under town administration. So the Planning Commission and the Select Board have a memorandum of agreement that states that the Planning Commission will provide oversight of these other offices that are technically part of town administration, because they all work together. I mean, it makes sense to have all of those, you know, together in a single office, because they're all intertwined. So there's been some confusion about that. But I, as the Director, report to the Planning Commission. It's an eleven-member commission. I report to them on specific Planning Commission-related matters, subject to their enabling legislation. And then I report to the Town Manager for everything else that falls under town administration. So the idea that the Town Manager doesn't have any oversight over my position is completely untrue. So we have an agreement and she and I meet monthly. I think it works really well. I mean, the Planning Commission, you know, gives us a seat at the table on a lot of state issues that we wouldn't have as a town. It's really important that, you know, regardless of how the structure of things are considered to be changed over time, that the Regional Planning Commission stays intact in some form. You know, they're looking at their legislation right now. They're proposing. We haven't drafted it yet, but we've been working towards getting there to update it.
I'm just sort of curious. So if this was, if we weren't an island out here in the Middle Ocean, and we were Barnstable or Plymouth on the mainland, we'd be, those towns would actually be part of a, a regional planning authority, and they would probably have a, a Plus Department or something like that, but someone like yourself wouldn't necessarily have to be kind of split and report to a planning. I mean, it could be organized in a different way, is just what I'm trying to say.
So the other, well, for instance, we'll just use the Cape, because I'm not a hundred percent familiar with a lot of the other ones. But like, on the Cape, their Regional Planning Agency is regulatory. And they have a huge staff and anything, any projects over a certain threshold have to be reviewed locally, and then they have to also be approved by the Regional Planning Agency. So their roles are, their role's different than it is here. Now, the Franklin County Commission, I forgot exactly what they're called, but they function a little bit more likely function, you know, because those are rural towns. They don't need their own staff for everything. So the Franklin County Commission staff provides services to all of the towns in that region.
Okay.
So different ones are structured different ways depending on the needs of that area.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions from the committee? Anybody on Zoom? Donna or Tom or Rachel? Rachel was that one? Any other question? Any questions from folks on Zoom? No? Our guests here, members of the public, any questions? All right?
All right.
Leslie, thank you so much, Jeremy. Oh, sorry, Jeremy.
Member of the public. When you do your outreach, you educate the voters. Do you ever keep metrics of how many people show up in Q and A typically? Do you touch thirty people, fifty people, two hundred people? How many people show up after all this effort? If someone asks you, how many of your town people are involved? But I have a different question. How many people actually show up?
Well, it depends on the issue. And it depends on how controversial it is. I mean, so what we send out for only map changes. So we'll send out a courtesy letter saying, you know, your neighborhood, it's your property is going to be affected by this change that we're proposing. Here's when the planning board's going to schedule their public hearing. And in advance, here are some documents that we're providing, and here's the staff person to contact if you have questions. So we'll provide a letter. We provide the draft article. We provide a map. We provide any zoning bylaw sections that may be relevant to the change. And, you know, sometimes we may send out five hundred and fifty people call. Sometimes we may send out a hundred and three people call. It just depends on, you know, what it is, but usually, like, we've reached out to people in the neighborhood ahead of time, like, this is what we're thinking about. Do you think that your neighbors would be supportive of this idea? Do you think they want to do something different? Like, what's your feeling on it? So there's a lot of that that goes on in advance of it actually moving forward.
But away from knowing there's great variability, does, throughout all departments and all outreach programs, is it safe to say that a hundred people respond? Is it eight hundred people? How much bracket it, knowing that the issues will change that every year?
It's completely variable on, you know, what the issue is, how many people are affected, how controversial it is. But I don't think, maybe you're hearing our statements, but I think, you know, the more outreach and the more education and the more advanced questions you can get, the more successful whatever your initiative is, will be at town meeting. That's what, the worst thing that could happen is someone just calling the article asking a question that could have been answered ahead of time, and then the whole conversation sort of spinning out of control.
Which happens a lot. Happens a lot. Certainly happens.
What's one of the toughest things that you've had to handle in, in that context in making a change? Like Brent Point, turning it into a separate region? Or I don't know, I'm just thinking, where, where have you run into problems?
I, I would say the articles that really make people feel like their property rights are being taken away in some way. I mean, a lot of people are willing to to compromise, like, I'll take a little less ground cover. I'll take a little less structure height for the overall benefit of the community. But when it comes to something, for instance, swimming pools, like, that was very, very controversial on people. You know, those types of changes really feel like something they may want, really want, is being taken away from them.
Are you involved in the Baxter Road situation?
No. I'm not.
Are you lucky?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Jim, could I?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, sure. And is there anything happening right now that you're educating the, the, the town meeting?
Actually, you were saying Lucy.
Oh, Lucy, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, we did the mailing for any map changes, but that's it. I don't think the planning board has anything like overly controversial for this town meeting. We just felt like, well, I felt like the board members agreed that there's a lot going on at town meeting. We have a lot of controversial issues. We have a lot of big items on the agenda that really need people's attention. And we just started our update to the master plan that was done in two thousand nine. We have a consultant that will be at the planning board Monday night. The meeting starts at four, if anyone's interested. And she's going to give just a quick update of, you know, where she is, and I hope touch on like what we'll be, you know, doing for public outreach and when that's going to get started. So we kind of wanted to wait this year and give people a little break and, and get the master plan process going, the update.
I just didn't follow. So a lot of people have been talking about like having a schedule and town meeting. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that goes back to timing. Like, it is really hard to plan around once a year at times. But a lot of work goes into town meeting. So I think having two when you need to works, but always planning for two really, I think, ratchets up the workload for the volunteer boards and committees and all the town staff that are involved. And there's a cost, obviously.
Great. Also, Carol, I think we're gonna try to move this thing along, so.
I just am realizing that one thing I was just trying to get clear about while you were here was what the difference would be if we went to a town council form of government versus open town meeting in terms of the MP and EDC and the Planning Department. And I'm trying to answer that question right now, and I still not clear. Any, any more thoughts?
I mean, I don't know that that would have to change. It could change. I mean, the town could always have their own municipal planning department. I think it would duplicate duties and doesn't necessarily make a sense. But it's certainly something that could be explored, has been brought up in the past, and it's always been decided that, you know, the commission already has some staff that can do a lot of the work, so why have two sets of people overlapping?
Okay. That's it. Leslie, thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate you coming in person as well.
Thanks for coming in first.
Thanks for talking to us.
Good afternoon.
Nancy, are you ready?
I am. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me? Can you all hear me okay, since I'm not in person?
We're good.
You're good?
Okay.
Thanks for taking the time and, and fire away.
Absolutely. So I'll just start right in with the quick questions you had provided, Joe. So I think what So I think what works for a town meeting is. Uh, probably all the things you've heard before from Leslie and others, you know, the citizen opportunity to affect legislation. The direct engagement, the ability to have your own voice heard. Hear the voice of your fellow voter, um, potentially. Have a back and forth, uh, for and against something with your fellow residents, voters. And feel a part of the decision-making process. And I think there's a lot of transparency in that as well. As long as you're there, you're able to be there and read the warrant and things like that. Um, so that's generally, I think, what works. What, what doesn't, I think, is obviously the inability. Or the inconvenience for folks to attend annual town meeting. Uh, the length of the meeting. Um, as Leslie had mentioned, the lack, perhaps lack of understanding or reading of the warrant in advance by some voters. Obviously, um, seasonal residents, um. Cannot speak unless it's an issue pertaining to their property. Um, or by some other pre-arrangement with the moderator and perhaps in town council, they could a little more. Um, the lengthy decision-making process for certain issues, um. Like in the issue that Jeff had, um, brought up in another of your meetings that I listened to about, you know, not being able to get on the. Sore district, waiting a year, maybe to get your property tied up. You know, certain financial things, waiting for annual town meeting. And now I think also with our, um. Increased residents and voters and the increased attendance, attendance in recent years. We obviously have a space issue where we've had to divide into two spaces. Uh, we've had over a thousand attend. For the last three years. And so the, the, the putting on of town meeting has become much more of a. A technological event with. A, the handheld devices, AV teams, uh, things like that. It's, it's a complex to get it going. So, and I just think that, um, I know that quorum has been mentioned and or lack of quorum in some of your other meetings. But I, I think that that has rarely, uh, been an issue. Uh, I think the voters, what they value is. Th- those that attend regularly, they value it fiercely for all the reasons that, you know, I said before, their direct engagement. Their ability to write legislation, to be part of the decisions, voice their opinions, submit articles. Uh, have a one man, one vote thing. So they feel that their vote counts as an individual. And I think that, uh. The voters that attend town meeting and a lot of the voters that vote in our town elections. Value those things very fiercely. I think in terms of your question. What are potential benefits or problems with a town council form of government? I think the biggest problem by far will be the sell of it to the voters. Um. What are they gonna get in return for losing their, their direct vote, their individual vote? And, um. I know that, you know, has been discussed before and I just mentioned about, um. The ability for seasonal homeowners to attend and I don't think the voters of Nantucket, that is not a concern for them. Their concern is their voice. And their ability to remain and live here and the ability of their children to do so. So I think that. The concern of, um, of the possibility of having it be more open to seasonal residents is, is just not a concern of. Of the majority of the year-round voters, you know, in my opinion. Uh, so I think the biggest problem will be the sell. And, um. I think, you know, the complexities of creating precincts and things like that, but I think that the state would likely help with that. Sarah had mentioned, um, a concern about getting enough, uh, counselors to vote. I noticed that, um, or I, I actually was with the, um, town clerk over in Barnstable yesterday. Because we had a Cape and Islands clerk meeting and I was able to go back to her with her office afterwards and ask her some questions. And I know, I believe they have nine counselors and I think they're have, considering adding two at large. And I believe the town. Oh, thirteen and adding thirteen, yes, excuse me, and adding two at large. The town of Franklin, which has similar form of government. Town council form of government with the town manager, they have nine. Um. And they receive no compensation and they do two-year terms. Um. I think that, you know, getting us a full slate of fully informed counselors. Could be a concern, you know, do they get a compensation? Are they willing to be here for twelve months of the year and attend the meetings? Barnstable, I believe, has two meetings a month. Uh, Franklin is only required to have one, but it looks like they have two and, um. You know, it's, those counselors are gonna have to be obviously very informed people and willing to take on that position. And to, and to get them to attend regularly. Um, but I think some other pros are obviously for town council form of government would be, you know, the expediency of action. More frequent meetings. Um, the town clerk in Barnstable said that they routinely have. An hour to an hour and a half, uh, public comment at the beginning of every meeting. So that's quite a length of time and that's quite an opportunity for people. The, the seasonal homeowners as well, or the non-voting residents and the voting residents, it's quite an opportunity for people to come in. And voice their opinion on an issue. Um, obviously you have to be paying attention to the issues. I understand that. Um. But, um. And the laws, you know, are enacted quicker from what I understand, and you probably all already know this, but. When they vote on something in the town council, they have to reaffirm it again at the next meeting. And then the, um, town clerk told me that it is in their code within thirty days after that second vote. For us with town meeting, the things that, uh, the bylaws and the zoning things that have to be updated in the code. I have to send the zoning and bylaw items to the attorney general first. There's the ninety day wait. And then, as long as approved by attorney general, then they go into effect. So I think that's another expediency.
I'm curious on that, that difference. Um, do town council form, formed. To towns with town council form of government, do they just have a different? Uh, sort of enabling legislation with the state over the Commonwealth or? Is it, is it just sort of practice that open town meeting, you know, there's a ninety, there's that longer, longer wait for the, uh, the government, the. Commonwealth to approve it.
I think it's just because of town meeting and the way, um. The way it's written into the law. So I, you know, I was reading the charter in, um, Franklin and I didn't. Quite get that far, but I think it's got to do, it must be to do with the legislation. Um. And over in Barnstable did tell me that it, it has to be voted on twice if it's something that's gonna. You know, change the law and then it goes into effect after the second vote. And, and they have it up on their code within thirty days. So that's, you know. Definitely, uh, another example of expediency. Um. She also mentioned to me, and maybe Curtis already said this in a prior meeting, I don't know, but they've, they've only had, uh. A town meeting called by residents since they went to town council, you know, more than thirty years ago. She, she said probably two times in twenty years. Um. And in Franklin, if they want to have a citizens initiative, five percent of the voters. Have to sign off on that petition. So that's, that's quite a high mark. Yeah. So I think that, um. I think that is probably everything. That I had with my thoughts. I, you know, I've, I've enjoyed learning about it and I want to learn more about it. And I've been able to watch some of the meetings with my assistant that you've had. Um, and I had reached out to the Franklin town clerk with some questions. I haven't heard back from her yet, but. I think the biggest thing in my opinion is, is gonna be the sell to the voters. Um. They value, they value their voice, they value their vote and they're gonna give their vote to a council. And I think. I think that's gonna be a tough sell and then the benefits will have to really be shown to them. Oh, one other last thing I wanted to mention, just to sort of an interesting little, um. Fact, I remembered a couple of years ago, it was twenty twenty, actually, we had a, uh, two non-binding questions on the ballot. And of course, twenty twenty, the COVID year, none, none of us can remember any of it, but. Uh, the first question was, are you, are you satisfied with the town meeting form of government? And eight hundred and eighty-seven said yes, and seven hundred and eighty-eight said no. So that was a pretty even split. Um, but the second question was, would you like? Town resources, town funds to be used to explore other forms of government? And eleven hundred and two said yes, and five hundred and ninety-three said no. So the voters certainly wanted explored. And you hear a lot, you, you seem to hear as many voices saying they, they're done with town meeting. As voices, as proponents of it, but, um. When it came down to the question of satisfaction and that was obviously only, uh, about fifteen, sixteen hundred voters. But it was pretty evenly divided.
Terrific. Nancy, thank you for your comments. Um, can we, uh, questions? So anybody on the committee have a question for Nancy?
I know we talked about this, um, before. Maybe you can just give us some information about the actual turnout at town meeting versus at the ballot for the municipal elections. And then again, at the ballot for the federal and state elections. Um, just so we can be reminded of those numbers, because I think that's really tough.
Well, I don't have the, um. Federal election numbers in front of me. I, you know, I have some of them in my head, but. Federal and state elections have really changed a lot since twenty twenty in Massachusetts because. They enacted early voting, the allowance in twenty twenty, both in person and by mail. Uh, well, I, I take that back. We had that prior, but we didn't have it in person. And they started doing the vote by mail cards in twenty twenty. So I think that really, um. Hugely impacted our numbers. Uh, I think, I believe we had a seventy-five percent. Voter turnout for the presidential election in twenty twenty and presidential elections are always the biggest turnout. So I'm not sure, um. Especially with the vote by mail cards now, I'm not sure we can really compare our town elections with the state. And the general election. But with the town meeting attendance. It, it seems like in recent years we've gotten, and I gave the, um. The numbers to, uh, Joe. I think in recent years, it seems we've gotten around ten percent. Uh, sometimes I think it was eleven percent last year and. Other clerks are always very surprised at our attendance numbers.
That's relatively high, correct Nancy? I mean, I think, anecdotally, I don't know whether the Collins Center folks have a comment on this, but. I, I've heard that other towns, two, three, four percent is not an unusual turnout.
Anecdotally, I hear it's very high. Um. You know, I think we do have engaged citizenry out here on the island. Um. But then, of course, the town election attendance is higher. And that seems to average though around twenty to twenty-three percent. If we have a, a hot race. Or, you know, we have a four-way selectmen race or we have a. A, a question like we're building a new police station or something, people are very up in arms about, we can go up into the thirty percentiles. But it tends to hover around the low twenties, sometimes eighteen to twenty-three percent for town elections.
And so of that, on the municipal elections, do you know about what percent are voting absentee?
Um, I don't really think I could say that Jill, but up until twenty twenty. When of course, everybody wanted to vote at home because people were staying at home. Up until then, it was very small. Um, maybe. Maybe ten percent, maybe two percent. It was very small. The absentee, the amount of ballots I would send out for a town election before we had the vote by mail, the early vote. No excuses in Massachusetts was very small. But last, the last two years figures, which would be higher, I imagine, I just don't have those in front of me. But it's still, it's still pretty small. I, I will say one thing, this year it's gonna be. Like nothing, like nothing we've ever seen before because this, the Commonwealth has mail vote by mail cards to every voter. In, um, in the Commonwealth. So every voter in our town. So we already have almost a thousand. Vote by mail cards to send for the town election, uh, vote by mail ballots, excuse me, to send for the town election. We've never had, uh, never have I sent that many. So this year's number is gonna be. A lot higher of people voting by mail.
That, that's the number requested.
Yes, requested. Yeah, they may not return them, but a lot of people will.
Yeah, okay.
More, more than usual.
Oh, Donna, go, go for it.
Nancy, does that have anything to do with the increase in population?
Uh, does the, the number of expected, um, votes? I don't think so. I think it has to do, we, we do have an increase in population, as you know. Um, I think it has to do with the fact that. Those little cards, postcards came in the mail and. Already we have almost a thousand of them. So, and they're gonna mail them again, you know, this summer, that'll be after the town election. We won't get them mailed again before our town election. But I think it's simply because people got this card in the mail and they said, sure, I'd like to vote by mail. And if they chose all elections this year, we as town clerks are obligated to include any elections. Outside of state that fall in that, which will include May. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a quick question. Um, we're saying that the population has grown lately. What is, what are those numbers? And, and what period of time has it grown? I'm just curious.
Okay, so our population right now, the last, it, it changes every day because people move in and out. No surprise there. It's about fourteen thousand two hundred people that we can put a name on. Um, Massachusetts is the only state in the. Country, I believe, that does a yearly annual census, a street list. Um. You know, we know the federal census in twenty twenty gave us fourteen thousand two hundred, so a similar number. We know, we all believe it's higher, probably more like eighteen, nineteen, but that's another story. Um, in two thousand and three, twenty years ago. Excuse me, we had ten thousand five hundred and thirty individuals. But another interesting fact is that we right now have about nine thousand eight hundred voters. If we have nine thousand eight hundred voters. And we have, say, I'm gonna take a wild guess. I don't know the school number right now, but. We have about sixteen hundred kids in the public schools, say. You know, we have more than fourteen thousand two hundred people here, but for voters. Nine thousand eight hundred right now.
Any other questions here? Uh, Nancy, just this, this may be sort of hearsay, but, um, I was curious, the fact that you chatted with the, the folks in Barnstable and, and, um. Franklin. Have, have you had any, do, do you have any sort of, um, um. I don't know anecdotes from those towns about whether town council has issues, good issues, bad issues, has it? Has it played out the way they expected? I, I don't know how long each of these towns has been a town council forum, but just sort of curious. What your fellow town clerks would chat about.
Well, I really wish I, I could have, uh, heard back from the clerk in Franklin, which I'm sure I will. I, I don't know her, but I do know a lot of them. You know, from our conferences and our classes, because I believe they've been a, uh, town council for less time. Barnstable since around eighty-nine, ninety, and obviously we know the five towns. Um. The clerk in Barnstable, I think, was a little surprised that we considered it, but you know, what, we're considering it. But when I explained to her, you know, reminded her that. But when I explained to her, you know, reminded her that the breadth of our warrants, over 100 articles, the amount of people that are attending our meeting, you know, not other towns have airports and nursing homes and town peers and all the things that we have. I, I will say that she's, the clerk in Barnstable feels it's very quickly effective in terms of getting the laws on the books after, the change laws after the second vote of the council. I think that is probably about it.
And I was, I was honestly fishing, you, you made the comment, which I think some of us agree with, then it, it's coming up with the, with the, for lack of a better term, sales pitch, or, or why this is a benefit to the voters. I'm just sort of curious, you know, what some other towns have dealt with, and what, what arguments they've been able to come up with. They've convinced their voters that a change was worth it.
Yeah. If I, if I get some more information about that, I'll, I'll be glad to pass it on. I know that Braintree also is town council, but they have a mayor. And I think that's a fairly recent iteration, too, that they went to that. Yeah, if I, if I get any more insight, I'd be happy to pass it on.
Appreciate it.
It's for me, too.
All right. Any other questions? Nancy, thank you so very much for your time this afternoon. Really appreciate you talking to us.
Thank you for having me.
All righty. And last, but not least, our chair of the finance committee, Ms. Cronow.
Hi, Joe. Hi, hi, committee. It's, uh, it's kind of nice to see what the owl looks like from afar versus that lovely trailer room where I'm usually sitting and only see half of my head. So it's an interesting visual here on the screen. Okay, Joe had sent out some questions. And yesterday, fortuitously, we had a finance committee meeting that focused just on giving their ideas and thoughts as a committee in respect of this topic. And so I took copious notes, and I'll just kind of run through those, and then let, let any of you ask questions that you might have from our perspective. So when we talked about, there was some discussion yesterday about what are we solving for? What's, you know, what's the reason for this? Subsequent conversations with some of the people who were asking that, I suggested that, yes, it's always helpful to know what you're solving for. However, until I, I strongly, I personally believe, not as chair of the finance committee, but just Denise, is that until you tell people how it will work, that it's our, our individual reasons for why we would do this are interesting, but maybe not the total picture. And the analogy I used yesterday, or I used with some folks today and yesterday was that, okay, folks, I've decided I want the medal that you get at the end of the New York City Marathon. And I tell someone that. And then they say, okay, well, eight months before, this is what you're going to do every day for eight months to get that medal. And I say, I don't want the medal. So, you know, learning what I have to actually do to get that medal, I might not want that medal. So one of the things I think will be important, particularly for this committee, is the how will actually also be persuasive for people, do we want to go to this? And one of our committee members yesterday brought up kind of case studies, right? So if this is in front of the town council, this is how it'll be handled. And as Nancy rightfully said, at least in the time I've been on finance committee, we've never had a year with less than over 100 warrant articles. This year, it's 112. Last year was 107. As you can see, I can still remember these numbers sadly. So the, that will be spread out, obviously, over the year versus a once or twice a year discussion. And so defining the future state, what it's going to look like for citizens, what it's going to look like for voters, what it's going to look like for people who typically bring articles in front of the town meeting. Joe quoted my favorite quote yesterday, which is, it'll be interesting to see if the turkeys vote for Thanksgiving. The people who go to town meeting like town meeting, for the most part, enjoy it, enjoy having a voice, understandably. And so for them, is the future state, is their, is their voice as valid as it is at town meeting? And the, you know, the cons of it, you know, because I asked, we asked everybody for pros and cons. So speed of decision-making, efficiency, timing of big decisions, probably being able to do a better job on grant applications because we don't have to wait to full cycle for things. The cons would be, if the committee, what, the town, the town council would need to be large enough such that a small faction couldn't be the only voice, right? So if it's five people, and then only three, three people are exactly alike, you want to make sure there's diversity of thinking and diversity of opinions and approaches. So, you know, what's the right number? Is it nine? Is it 11, et cetera? And that's, you know, obviously, will come out as you guys talk about it. And one of the other cons that came out was, you know, we put a lot of, the finance committee and the planning board puts a lot of time in warrant articles. Some we can spend, frankly, hours on. Will that same level of scrutiny happen in the future? Or will it be more of a, will these 11 people think this, and this is how it works? And I know that's not true, because otherwise, it wouldn't be an effective form of government. I'm just raising what were concerns that were raised yesterday in the meeting. And, yeah, and, you know, so if you take a look at it, so whilst we do get, especially in hot topic years, and I think about marijuana, when half the audience stood up and left after that vote, the, the attendance at town meeting is actually a small percentage. It's probably around 10% of the voters, if we're lucky, right? So that still isn't, when you talk about representative government, and that they, people believe that's more representative. And at the same time, it is 10% out of registered voters. So, so you could make the case that a town council wouldn't be less representative, I guess, is the, is where I went with that. And now, as you can see, I don't actually have to breathe when I talk, so you can never interrupt me, so I'm just going to stop talking.
Thank you, Denise. Questions from the committee?
You were going so fast with that last sentence that I, I didn't take all of that in. Can you just repeat that last point that you were making about the representation?
Sure, that at town meeting, typically, we're lucky if we get 10% of the voters there. So I think one of the concerns from the people who really do enjoy town meeting and feel it's important to keep it is that, yes, there's 900 people versus 11, but those 900 are only 10% of the voters. So you're still not looking at a completely representative population. And that's in good years. I mean, there's been times where I remember the one outdoors, which is still one of my favorites, not for the reason we were outdoors, but because it was nice outdoors. At the last vote, there was 150 people, making some actually important decisions on behalf of the whole community. So, there you go.
Other questions? Oh, Donna, fire away.
Yeah, I, this is, I've been thinking about this. I'm not sure who to direct it to, Denise, or, or Collins, or the group in general. But, um, are there any studies out there that would show that there would be, there is an increase when you switch from ATM to town council? Or there's no change or something? I mean, with all of the changes, has anybody done some kind of a demographic report on this? Will that increase, you know, will we get 15 or 20% if we switch to town council? Or will we get fewer people if we switch to town council?
Well, I, I.
What, you meant the ballot?
I, Anthony, I, I mean, my, my first reaction, Donna, but I'm going to let Anthony pick a list. You, you're, you're going to go from, in our case, you know, 10% of the voters to whoever shows up at a town council meeting. Because the, 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 the need, if you will, of 1,000 people showing up at a town meeting to debate and vote on things goes away because that, that responsibility goes to the nine, 10, or 11, however many you select, town councillors.
Well, what I'm thinking is just aggregate the whole thing. In other words, you have one town meeting, and then annual town meeting, and then you have town councils. So I'm wondering if there really ends up being more participation over a 12-month period or a 10-month period than one town meeting that brings in 10% of 9,000 voters.
Well, awesome.
I don't know.
I mean, that would be an advantage.
Yeah.
Yes.
Denise, if you don't mind us cutting into your time, Anthony, do you?
Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I just, I've been thinking about this, and I.
Sure, so I'll just jump in here just very briefly.
Fire away.
So I'm not aware of any sort of comprehensive studies analyzed to, again, it's, it's kind of an apples and oranges comparison because there's the town meeting, which is the whole community as the legislative body, versus a subset of people. But what some of the anecdotal research that I've seen suggests is that, and it really is, this might not be helpful to you because it's really related to size, smaller communities that have town meeting, have a number of elected boards and committees. They actually suffer from having lower turnout, more, more absences in terms of candidates for certain positions. And so there's a, there's a spot, what, at a community having a certain size and having a certain number of elected positions as well as town meeting, where they're not getting the same type of turnout. And as communities increase in size, turnout in some, I don't say turnout improves, but it's sort of, it's sort of hits a flat line. It, it's a place where it does not necessarily improve over time as a percentage of overall voters. And then it's kind of an apples and apples comparison to like a council forum, because then you have a, a set of individuals who are showing up at a meeting bi, you know, bi-monthly or monthly. And the studies that I've seen is that there, there isn't a huge concern with large persons of, of that type of body not be, being absent or not making the meeting.
Amen.
Grace?
It, it occurs to me, however, that in a town council, people will come to the council meeting to look at things that they're interested in. And they might not attend things that they're not interested in. But in a town, annual town meeting, you have to go for the whole package to be there.
Right.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I've gotten, I'm sorry, Jill, I don't look back to my right. You can just kick me.
No, no, it's fine. But, but what, didn't, didn't I hear the guy from Bridgewater say that they actually called a town meeting, it should say non-voting town meeting? Didn't he say that? And that was because they had a big issue about the sewer and?
Just to talk.
Yeah, so they invited, you know, to have a, a bigger conversation, which I thought was.
Did too, yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought that was a good idea to encourage, you know, they wanted the feedback. It was almost like their focus group.
Any other questions for Denise? No, pretty comprehensive answering questions.
Oh, I, I asked you a question, Denise.
Go ahead, Jill.
Do you think that the outcome at town meeting is mostly in, like, do you think it mostly hits the mark? Or do you think they're often, are not the right outcome? So you can, between county and town, and it's a wonderful, if you want to, but.
I'm looking forward to being voted off the island after I answer this honestly.
I know, sorry.
So I would say, there's probably 10% of the vote that I feel gets skewed on the moment by somebody making an emotional plea that if everybody was a bit calmer, they might have voted differently. I'd say there's maybe three or four articles always that if calmer heads prevailed, they'd probably vote a different way. And it's typically around things that, frankly, I'll, I'll just leave it there because I really don't want to get voted off the island. The other piece of it, though, the one thing I forgot to say at the beginning, when I started, you know, my stream of consciousness dump for all of you, was that, remember last year at town meeting, the finance committee unanimously endorsed studying how to get to a town council form of government? That was the actual motion that we made. And so that was the intention, not so much to explore. And I realized that the, the select board, well within their purview, has expanded it to comparing all the possible ways that we could govern Nantucket. And I think it's also, so having said that, I think it is important that the how is going to be important. I, I've, I said that at the beginning, that people will make judgments on, well, how will this work? How do we get there? What does this mean for me in the future? And that actually leads to what's the burning platform for making the change? More so than, oh, I just want to make speedier decisions, because that's nebulous. What's speedy to me might not be speedy to somebody else. So I think that as you, as you do your work as a committee, and you know, the things that you learn, being able to explain the how will really bring people along, and it'll also kind of trigger the why. So, yes, there was a lot of discussion yesterday at FinCom about the why. And I think the why could be different for everyone. And, and I gave a couple of examples that aren't really relevant right now. But we had a few articles come to our committee this year that the why stated by the proponent wasn't actually the why. It was their why, but it wasn't actually what the outcome would be and why you would want to make the change happen. So the why is very personal often, and important, yes. I guess my, my observation would be, don't get hung up on the why. Focus on the how, and it'll lead to the why, and it'll also give people a better picture of this is what the brave new world looks like, and yeah, I want to sign up for that. Or no, I'm not comfortable with that, I want to stay with the world I know. Or some, something in between, if that makes sense.
It's great advice.
Brilliant.
So, so think about ways to describe how, how in our world, how town council, a town council form would solve some of these problems, you know, sort of faster, better, you know, broadly for the electorate, as opposed to, you know, some of the experiences we've had at town meetings where things don't always go as smoothly as you would like at the outset, so.
Yeah, and I think, Joe, I mean, to your point, my favorite example still is the garage for the equipment, for the fire trucks and the police equipment, and to have a workspace for them to be able to work on, to do repairs and stuff indoors. You know, that's been, I think, defeated twice. And yet, we're leaving multimillion-dollar equipment sitting outside that is aging faster than it would had it been parked in a garage three years ago, if the voters had voted for the appropriation. So that wouldn't have to wait every year to come back as an appropriation, as it is again this year, if town council could make that decision, you know, in a month, let's say, so.
Great. Any other questions? No?
Actually, maybe for Nate, can I bring Nancy back in there, too? Because Denise and Nancy could go to answer, I think.
Fire away.
Sure.
I think another thing that might help us a little bit is when you look at all the votes on all the articles over the years. And this, usually, it's the citizen who pulls that kind of have the lowest vote numbers at the end, because they're towards the end. But, for example, you know, we've had, you know, votes where it was like 183 to 182, yeah, that, like, two years ago. It might help to see, like, how many things are we passing where it's only a few hundred people, right? You know, we complained about the 750, but then, you know, I hear you all say, well, that's really great turnout. But, but it dwindles down. So, you know, what threshold, and we, we only need the form really for the budget items, not for the citizen who pulls, so. You know, that. Some information about some of those.
If you looked at, we have pretty consistent summaries, town meeting summaries for, you know, the last 15 years or whatever. And if you look at the summaries, it's just a two-page document, or two to four-page document with the summary of the vote of each article. So that's, that's something that maybe that information could be gleaned from. It's just, it's, it's a little difficult. It, it would be a little time-consuming to do, because some of them, like the 183 to 182 that you mentioned a couple of years ago, that's pretty unusual. But it's also with, you know, how many people were there? And then how many people left? And how many voters did we have that year?
Yeah, but like, how, 20 years ago, did you have a town meeting over two nights, three nights? I mean, people are saying this year, we might have it over three nights. I've never done three nights, and I remember that.
Yeah, I think, I think they did, honestly.
Yeah, so, so the.
It was very common.
Yeah.
I, I have to say, the summaries are really interesting. I've gone back and looked at the last 20 years, because, you know, I'm just that much fun. And the least number of articles that we've ever had was 84. Because I kept thinking, are we ever going to be Dennis? They have 40, they're done in two hours. I'm going to go move to Dennis, right? So it's. So it's, it's, we've always had close to a hundred or well, or or over a hundred for most of the last twenty years. So that's a lot to do in two days and it's a lot for people to digest, I believe. And the topics are getting more complex. I'd and you know, when somebody stands up and makes an amendment on the floor of town meeting, which is absolutely their, you know, right to do. It just, it's hard for, I I I'll personally say it's hard for me who spends. Tons of time on this stuff between December and town meeting. So I can imagine for a voter, it it it's it's hard to make a decision, right? So I think anything where we could have a more informed voting public. And have that more informed lead to better decisions. I'm not saying the decisions we make now aren't better, but. You know, something disappears in front of you in three seconds. I'm not sure we can always make the right. If we think about it later, what would we have decided differently potentially, so.
Carolyn.
Um, Denise, I'd love to get your opinion on why Nantucket over the last twenty years has had such um. Is this such an outlier and how many articles we've got compared to other town?
Well, I only compare us to Dennis, because Dennis is my, you know, goal here, but um. I don't know if we are an outlier, Carolyn. I what I know that is that it's a very engaged electorate. Um, people like putting in citizen war articles, for example. I mean, last, this year we only had twenty-nine and I say only. Last year we had fifty-one. Uh, and the reason I remark on this is because I personally invite each one to come to FinCom to talk to us about it. So I know how many emails I write. Uh, and so, so I think we just. And we just have a lot of appropriations and other things that we do to it's, you know, think about it, we're. Effectively a two-hundred-million-dollar business between our operating budget and our capital budget. So that's, there's complexity in that and complexity leads to the need for um, sus- uh, sus- Supporting legislation that goes with it. So and and I think, I do think it's a community that's very engaged politically. Uh, in terms of running the town and wanting to participate in the town, which I think is positive.
And when we are a two-hundred-million-dollar um.
Corporation.
Corporation, because of, for such a small island, we are that way, because we're a highly desirable island. The land value is um, high. Uh, why else? What are other, what are the reasons?
Well, well, we have an airport. We have, we have an airport. We have a, we have a nursing home. We have, uh, as Nancy pointed out, we have a, the harbor and the, you know, we're an island that adds complexity and costs to running the place. Um, and so of the, so we have approximately, let's say, a hundred and thirty million dollars operating budget. Of which um, that is. Uh, half of that revenue or eighty percent of that revenue comes from real estate taxes. And half of that revenue comes from, of the real estate taxes comes from um, people who are not registered voters here. So just, it's it's interesting, you know, numbers tell a story and it's an interesting story. So. When you think about eighty-five percent of our revenue that supports this island's need for schools and. Fire people and, you know, everything that we need to run a community. And we can't just borrow it from next door, right? So there's things that we have as this, on a standalone basis. Nursing home, airport, that most communities don't have.
Uh, a follow-up question. Um, I'm wondering if, would you? Do you think it might be because the, so much of that tax base comes from our non-voting? Um, taxpayers, di- would you say that there is an impetus from that group of people? To change to town council form of government, because it will allow them more involvement? Would you say that that might be a, a a dynamic that's at play?
I would say that um. You know, they have a voice in the community where they're registered as a voter, right? That's where they have their impact. So for example, um, I've been full-time on the island since twenty-fourteen. But I effectively moved here, yeah, mid-two thousand, uh, or two-two thousand and four, two thousand and five. And was a voter since that time. Uh, before that, I was a voter in um, Hoboken, New Jersey, where I was living at the, before I moved back. Before I moved to here. So I think the, I I I would imagine that the. Folks who want to have a say, more of a say or would like to have a say, um. Would be able to do it in a town council format, because they'd be able to attend those meetings and speak up. Uh, as we know, the only one person from the advisory committee of the non-voting taxpayer can speak one or two. And it's not really up to Sarah as the moderator to say who can speak. But um, they would be able to go to town council meetings and speak freely. So I think that would also have them be able to feel more engaged in the community. I think our advisory committee of non-voting taxpayer payers does a good job of. You know, being integrated into the community as much as possible. Um, seeing as that they can't vote, but they do many other things. And you know, I know I've been to their meetings. Before and told them about finance committee, which is always fascinating to everyone. I know, I realize it. So um.
Uh, let me, actually Donna, you were waving your hand, would you, I I I'm gonna.
Um, I just want to reiterate.
I have a comment here. I I I think I'd be remiss if I didn't let you talk.
Thank you. Denise, I my, I agree. Um, I am a member of the um. Uh, advisory committee for non-voting taxpayers and I'm a, um, a non-voting member on this wonderful committee. But yes, we would see it as an opportunity, um, not for voting, because we can't. But for perhaps, you know, um, voicing opinions and and suggestions and so forth. So, yes. We would see that as a a great opportunity for us.
Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy.
I was just gonna say, it occurred to me that another group that would have an opportunity to voice their opinions is a huge group. And that is our um. Immigrant, non-yet citizens, which I I think we all agree has to number, has to number five thousand people. I mean, they would also. If they chose to attend town council and and share their opinions. And I think that's something to consider too. It's a, it's a big group.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, um, Lucy, how her, um, who would decide, this is for Denise, I guess, look at Denise. And who decides the order of the article on the.
Well, there is sort of a standard article, a standard order in the sense that we do all the, a lot of the appropriations right up front. So one through twenty-three, twenty-four. After that, uh, it's really um. It's really town administration together with the select board. They go through and, you know, what what are, what order makes sense? Uh, I don't know if anyone remembers, but a couple of years ago, when we had so many um, articles related to a single topic. I made a motion to move them all forward, so we'd vote them all at the same time, rather than piecemeal and, you know, an hour between each one. Cause that really didn't help us as voters to make decisions. So we can reorder them on the day if if somebody makes a motion to do that. And then the um, the majority vote says, yes, we will reorder things. So but typically, it's tried to done in a sensible way, try to put zoning together, put the appropriations together. And then um, the articles that are more similar. So it's town administration, I'll talk to town manager about it. I I assume that the select board has input to it. So it's really tried to been, it's, the attempt is to make it logical. So, you know. And hopefully that's mostly what it is.
Any other questions for Denise? Denise, thank you so very much. Really appreciate your comments and taking the time this afternoon.
Um, I think you have an interesting topic in front of you and I'm glad to see that there's such a engaged group of people thinking about this. So we'll all have something to look forward to very soon. So, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Great, thanks again. Alrighty, um, the the next agenda item is next steps on the town for the, our committee. But Anthony, I don't know, since I wasn't here for the last meeting, um. Did you, did you want or were you expecting to kind of go through that, that sort of grid for a while tonight or this afternoon? Or did you have other issues that you wanted to bring up?
Yes, we, so we sent over that grid as part of um. I I would say not to get too fixated on it. It's part of an exercise we'd like to go through with the committee. Um, as it thinks about how it wants to get to its next steps.
Um, well, what I was gonna suggest is, I'm not sure with. Thirty-odd minutes or so left on our, on our, uh, do we really have enough time or would it be better? To push that to a um, certainly certainly walking through that grid and and kind of filling it in, what I assume the the exercise is. Um, might be better with a longer stretch of time.
Well, um, we're we're, so uh, our team has sort of talked about it and we can, um, we're sort of thinking this could be a um. I guess the start of, I won't say a long process, but part of a process as the board sort of. Uh, thinks about how it's gonna move through these various decision points. So we don't have to finish it, but we can start. It it provides, I think, a starting point um, for, I think, a discussion amongst the the committee that that, you know, our team kind of. Things may be helpful for for the group.
Okay, um, well, how about, how about we get going on it? The only thing I would like to, you know, maybe. Um, I I did extend the call to like five fifteen. I don't know what everybody's calendars is like, but how about we let you? Let's go through that for, as an exercise for a while, uh, maybe to close to five o'clock. And then, um, Tom, I would like to, uh, Tom Dixon. Um, I would like to leave, you know, ten or fifteen minutes at the end, so that we can talk a little bit about the select boards, um. Um, I guess request that we, you know, sort of broaden our our research, um. Um, in terms of um, other town forms of town government. So I thought that we could do that at the end for a little bit.
But he's gonna get to.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Um, good point. Tom, you you've got to get it, you've got to get out of here, um. Anthony, would you mind waiting about ten more minutes?
Yeah, yes.
Sorry about that, folks. Um. Tom, can I ask you to? Go first, if you don't mind, in terms of uh, the, you know, the discussion we had at the select board meeting about. This was two weeks ago, um.
Changing the mandate.
Basically altering the mandate or altering the the uh, the focus of the committee. Could you, could I ask you to talk about it a little bit first?
Yeah, I can kind of cup, throw a couple of things out. I I think kind of what happened two weeks ago was that. The select board discussed it and we unanimously felt that. The best use of this committee's, uh, believe the select board members felt that the best use of this committee. Was to study all forms of possible government for Nantucket. And we sort of ended on that. I know you sent that out, Joe, to the committee and I'm sure most of us or all of us watched. The little clip from the select board meeting. And then last week you came to present at the select board and we discussed. Um, you you talked about what was going on and kind of reiterated it and kind of we ended on that. You would add this to an agenda and sort of see where everybody was. And and my my kind of take on, I said this at both meetings was. Um, that I wasn't certainly going to speak for the committee, but but that I agreed with the, with the. The unanimous opinion of the select board, that it would behoove us. To take a look at all forms of possible governance for for Nantucket. And not to only focus on a, going to a new charter for a town council, even though that's what the article said. But as as Denise commented before, that 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 is in our purview. And I I think we left it as a placeholder last week, that you would, that we would come back to the committee, discuss this. Because the will of the majority of this committee, uh, and the folks who signed up to volunteer their time to serve on this committee. May have other ideas of how they, how they want this, how they want this committee to go, or how they want to spend their time. Um, so, so I I think it's really, uh, it's it's up to the the committee to. Talk about and to deliberate on how they, that given the new information from the select board. And 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 what we discussed in our meeting, how how the, how the will of the committee thinks that we should. Uh, go about this moving forward.
Thank you. That was well done. Curtis?
Um, my sense or my preference is that we follow the dictates of the article eighty-one. This committee should develop a proposal for a town council. Um, and put it before the voters and either vote to approve it or turn it down. Uh, I think in the process, we are already looking at various options. But I think our charge is clearly stated and we should develop an article, put it out there. They can vote it up or down. If they want to stay with annual town meeting, so be it.
And the other comments?
Man, um, thinking about Curtis, what you've just said there, um, certainly makes sense to me that the article was written a certain way. That was what was voted on. I understand from the finance committee and the select board that they had the purview to um. Uh, shape that. And so, and I accept that. Um, I'm thinking about Denise saying to us right now. That looking at the how helps us to understand. What the why is going to be and the value of the why. And um, that in the process of going through, playing that all out. Um, it is necessary in order for us to make a decision. Are we gonna go with town council form of government? And then are we going to do that work of outlining what it would be? Um, so in my mind, before the select board said what they said. I thought that is what we were doing right now, that we are going still through all the different forms. We are studying all the forms. I was not feeling ready to vote on anything. I think I said that a couple of. Uh, meetings ago. Um, and I do have a sense that there's a a sort of pressure. Amongst some of us and maybe from some members of the public to declare ourselves and let's get going, sort of a thing. Um, and I I thought that that was premature. So for me, slowing down and taking more time to look at more, to research more of the forms of government. Feels more where I was anyway and seems to fit with what the select board is opening up.
Any other, Joe?
Yeah, I I think we should follow what the select board wants to do. And that doesn't mean we won't come to your conclusion. We just have to. I I feel like the Collins Center can, can probably guide us through the other forms that we look at. And just make sure that we kind of.
I'm on the team.
I know, I'm just saying, I, it's important. I mean, they're authorizing the money for us to do this. And I I do value what they say and they just want to make sure that we explore everything, the new concept for everybody, so. I think it's okay. It'll, it'll help us come to a better conclusion.
Jeremy, I'm sorry, Bo, you're 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 public at the moment, so.
I do not believe that it is in the purview of the select board. To withhold the release of the, there, there, it's within their purview to. To withhold the release of the reserve funds, totally within their purview. But to alter legislation is not. They're an executive. Uh, board, they're not a legislative board. However. I do. Feel that this would be beneficial. Because there are questions, there are members of the public who have been pushing representative form. That we explain this. But I want to limit discussion in one meeting. All right, I I, we should address this. But we should also say, look. This is what we feel and if we're prepared, if we all come prepared for that meeting. When we do this, when we get it out of the way, I would be okay with that.
What is that, one meeting?
We are going to explain and we are going to study. The representative form. Okay, that's what the select board wants and that's what people like Hillary want. But we're gonna have to address it. Hey, we're gonna have to study it and we're gonna have to talk about it for a meeting. Okay, if we say, let's talk about it more, that's fine, but we have, our time is valuable. Okay, we can't just talk endlessly about forms when we had a mandate. That was legislated in the legislature. About it, okay? So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Um, Jeremy?
Uh, I I I think your ultimate, this committee's ultimate recommendation will be stronger and more robust. By having, by having the ability to disclose that you looked at the entire landscape. And that's why I would encourage you to support what the select board has encouraged you to do. And Curtis, I don't think it. And Curtis, I don't think it in any way diminishes what you proposed. I think ultimately it will strengthen what you have proposed.
Any other, Kelly? Yeah, want to say anything?
Yeah, I I I hear what everyone says and I I tend to agree with a little bit of what everyone is saying where I I I think, I I think the mandate is clear from from town meeting, what the expected deliverable is. And I I think you can meet that deliverable, but I I think I really agree with Jeremy in a sense that when you're going to present it to the people and the one thing that we've talked a lot about at all of these meetings are is the public coming to town meeting educated enough on each article to go forward? And just in my personal experience and dealing with town meeting articles or other matters in front of the town, when there's questions or moments where education could be better, those are failure points in the process. And, um, I think the classic example, I hate that I always use sewer examples, but but it it was really very apparent when the town went forward and was proposing sewer in Medicaid that there were so many questions that came up after the fact, whether could there be tight tanks? Could we do this? Could we do this? Could we do this? And those weren't addressed or how can we address zoning to not change Medicaid with sewer coming? Those weren't addressed enough upfront. It passed the town meeting and then got absolutely crushed at the ballot because that was what was in the public sphere were those questions. And I I think to give people the informed choice, we need to do at least some level of analysis. I think looking at the grid from Collins Center tonight starts a little bit of that analysis by looking at the different forms. So I think that has to be done, um, enough to answer those questions. But I think we have to at least somewhat do it to get the best product in the end.
Okay. You want to say anything, Paul?
No.
I I would just conclude then, um, you know, when I, when I made up my little presentation to the select board a week or so ago, um, you know, Tom summarized it quite well in terms of what the select board requested of us. They expected us to review kind of all forms of government. I assured Matt and a few of the other folks that had asked the questions that 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 we would do that. And I think that does make some sense. Um. But I, but I would also say, and I think I've said this in some meetings before, I mean, I signed on for kind of the article as written. I mean, I I personally believe and I've heard nothing that has changed my view that going to town meeting, uh, town council, sorry, town council would, um, be a step forward and make the make a lot of improvements in terms of how this town operates. Um, I I agree, we have to come up with some sort of what the problem is we're solving and and what's the what's the pitch to the electorate, but, um, I I'm committed to getting through to composing an article and letting the voters vote on it as as Curtis summarized earlier. So I just would not want to see our our group and this committee, uh, become just sort of a research project that doesn't end up with a an article that, uh, gives the voters a chance to vote. So, and I hope. I don't know how if everybody feels that way, you know, that that sort of direct about it, but that's sort of where.
Well, I think Bo has made a good point. If we devote a meeting to looking at representative town meeting, if that's what you're talking about, because, um, you know, the fact is, we know what open town meeting is. We're not going to have a mayor council. So we've got really two, well, three alternatives. Stay with the open town meeting, representative or town council. And if we investigate the representative town meeting for a meeting, and I like that, and decide if that's.
Well, I also have to say, I think our our friends from the Collins Center can be a big help here because they can certainly help us flesh out some of the, um, pros and cons, strengths and weaknesses, whatever you want to call it, uh, characteristics of the various forms. So that in terms of demonstrating to the select board as well as the electorate, we've done our homework. So, I'm sorry, Tom.
Yeah, just real quick, I I completely agree. Everybody's time, uh, is absolutely valuable and you are all, of course, volunteers and taking times out of out of your during during the workday, et cetera, to it's to serve on this committee. That is fantastic. That's what keeps Nantucket going. I just, I just feel it would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't slightly correct the record a little bit. Um, we did speak to town council about this. Um. This committee is an advisory committee and is appointed by the select board. So we do have purview to request it. We can't, you know, we're not forced, everybody is will, that's why, that's kind of why Joe and I had the the kind of back and forth at the select board last week was to 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 bring this back to the committee for for discussion. So so I I would just throw that out there. Also, the funds are absolutely not not would being withheld for for any reason. Uh, they came out of the county budget. Um, we did, we did, we did okay that unanimously by the select board. And then the comment was right after it, uh, anybody can go back and look at the video, which was that it was based on, um, further discussion with the town council study committee on how we felt about exactly what my intro was on this moving forward. Um, so I I just I I just wanted to, I just wanted to throw that out there that, uh, and and I think this this committee is a valuable exercise, um, for for whatever we come out with, uh, for as, um, to to study all the all the forms, if that's the will of the committee.
Thank you, Tom. Carolyn?
I wanted to follow up with something Bo has said. Um, you you mentioned that there is a member of the public that, um, uh, seems to be involved in the direction of this, and I I felt that it was important to get.
Yeah, I mean, Hillary's been in the meetings in the public comment section. She's been, uh, definitely of the opinion that we should look into representative form. So that's all.
All righty.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, are you, um, you, uh, Tom, you first and then Donna, sorry, Donna.
Yeah, just just real quick, um, through you to maybe to Anthony, I I'm just on the continuing the theme of studying all forms. Um, I think when the town count, the town government study committee came up with this last, the reason a mayor council was not possible is because our census population was under twelve thousand. Now it is above twelve thousand. So I think technically we could be a mayor council. And just in the further furtherance of discussion of all forms, that that is something that maybe we could, maybe that they could, uh, tackle as well when we get to that. Thank you.
Anthony, do you want to make a comment or do we?
No, I mean, that's correct. You're you're over the the constitutional threshold in terms of that happens, so.
All right, let me let Donna in then, because I want to wrap this up and and let the folks from Collins.
Um, I think we should actually, um, lean on the, um, expertise of the the Collins Group, um, to help us define what governments, what types of governments we want to discuss, put a time limit on it and move forward with whatever we decide as a whole, as a group. So we're not just we're not just discussing things ad infinitum. We do need to move forward into some sort of direction or decision.
Okay. Everybody had their say?
I am confused about one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Nancy Holmes, uh, gave us number, registration numbers of like nine thousand and then the census is fourteen thousand. Is it the census that prevails as far as the eligibility for a mayor council form of government?
I don't know.
It's pop, it's population registered voters is about ninety-five, ninety-eight hundred, Nancy said. And our total population per the twenty twenty census is fourteen thousand five hundred or thereabouts.
So that's the driver.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, just want to be clear.
All right, so then we're all marching forward. Uh, we're going to continue to, um, expand our knowledge of all forms of government and try to keep ourselves moving down the track. Um, Tom, thank you. Appreciate you starting that off and we'll let you go if you have to, you'll let you go up to select board, but, um, Anthony, you've been very patient. I'm sorry that we've chewed up a lot of the time, but let's let's see what we can get done and and, um, however much time we can squeeze in here.
I have to sneak out. I have to go. We've got my six-year-old, so. Just going to jet out now.
Okay.
But I'll catch up and I can always send a grid to those guys.
Yeah, no, no problem. It was very, it was very, um, I think, I think a very useful, important discussion that was, uh, just had, um. Sort of in light of that, and it really dovetails into sort of why we put the grid out there. Um, so I wanted to sort of put two points sort of as sort of the baseline, sort of as starting points is that, um, and it goes to this discussion about sort of, you know, how quickly do we move? You know, it sounds like some people don't want to spin their wheels. Um. The first point is that really all of the forms are are of government are good. There there are reasons to have all the types of forms. So there's no, there's no, you know, I like to tell people there's no, there's no bad form of government. You can find reasons to want to have all of them and there will be challenges with all of them. Um, and that's why one of the, um, first things that we recommend to bodies like this is to think about what is the problem that is trying to be addressed by the group? And I remember the last sort of speaker talking about, uh, the why. Really, it's, to us, it's kind of really been the same thing. You sort of focus on an item um, or or set of items and those beca, and how you answer the questions about how the form impacts those things that are important for your community are really going to drive, um, your decision. Um, the second point I sort of want to put out there as you start and sort of think about the grid is, um, the forms, um, I think, I think in Massachusetts, or at least sometimes that we see as we start these, is people get locked into this idea of like it's this form, it's that form, it's it's the other form, A, B, C, or D. Um. In Massachusetts, you have a much, you have a lot of, uh, sort of flexibility for the home role petition as to how you structure your government. Um, there are big changes that that sort of don't map well to one another, like, um, from town meeting to some former council. Uh, but there are other changes within within each of the forms that can sort of be mixed and matched. So those, so moving from one form, moving from let's say town meeting to, uh, town council may not fix you know, all of the problems, but there are other tweaks within that form that you can address as you sort of look through the form. Um, so the, we've given you the grid, the grid, the purpose of the grid is not for you guys necessarily to fill it out. It's to provide a framework for us to conceptually go through this idea of you know, why, why is this group here? What are you trying to do? As a group, you're going to come to what we hope would be some consensus about what the problems are you're trying to address and, um, what, where each form sort of, or where each form generally sort of fits in terms of solving that question. So that's, that's sort of the the spirit and the theme of the of the grid that was distributed. And to start it off, I think, you know, in the short time that we have here, we looked at your meeting from January tenth. But we pulled from that meeting the, what it looked like were the problems that this committee had identified as, uh, the things that you were trying to address. And to sort of start this process, um, I think we want to kind of continue that debate or or conversation that was just happening, which is we'd like to hear from each member of the committee, um, in whichever way you want to start with. Are these the right problems that are listed? Are there more? Are there less? Um, and we would like to hear from everybody. Are there consistent themes or issues that you're hearing and telling me? Now, we've heard some things about the number of meetings and 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 things of that nature, but I'd be curious to hear from each person on the committee, um, what they think the problems are that they're that they're here to fix.
Yeah, I think so. Change it up, huh?
Yeah, I mean, well, I, you know, I I guess, let me, let me just start off, I I think, um, to me, the 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 biggest shortcoming of annual town meeting is the, um, I guess I'd have to call it the lack of preparation of the voters who attend. I mean, that, um, you know, uh, as we've discussed here, we've just, you know, uh, you've all heard, we have a hundred and something articles. Um, there are people on a whole range of committees here in the town who do hundreds of hours worth of work uh, to put the articles and the and the, um, recommendations in the warrant. Um, and then, you know, folks show up at town meeting and have barely looked at it. And so you end up bogging down with, uh, trying to educate on the fly, either educate on people on the fly or deal with naive problems and, you know, complaints about articles that if people had read the newspaper and read the warrant, they might not have even stood up and asked. So, um, I just think, I just think that's, you know, to me, the the bigger shortcoming and it, you know, means that the meeting is long and slow and sort of circuitous. Well, anyway.
Um, I have three points to answer Anthony's question. I think a town council will be a more efficient way of, uh, running our government. But I am very concerned about two other things. The non-resident taxpayers who pay a a very large percentage of our tax bill and what Nancy called the immigrant population. I'm I that's, I'm not comfortable in calling it that, but we know there are four or five thousand people here who have kids in the schools, but they are not registered to vote. And this will give the non-resident taxpayers and that other minority population a voice and access that they do not have now. So those are my three points. Better access for two important consistencies and better efficiency in getting the process done.
Okay. Go, go around.
Go for it. Um, I think, obviously accompanied by dissemination of information and education. I'm, oh, I being a junior kind of politician, going into local politics, seeing the kind of disengagement and apathy and maybe disillusionment um, by our constituents. I know we, in some contexts, have a pretty, we have a good turnout compared to others. I still think kind of a ten to twenty percent turnout for a for a community just shows is indicative of just a lack of engagement and and it's discouraging when you're watching a community, watching a community change and evolve in the last few decades. Yeah.
You know what?
Um. I I I I have three things and I just realized that they are connected. So, um, for me, when I'm sitting in town meeting, what I just can't believe that happens, even though I'm highly engaged, highly informed and I'm paying attention, there can be a vote I'm really interested in and I have the clicker and I literally don't know which is yes, which is no, and which way I'm voting. I mean, I just find that the inaccessibility for me of being able to get my opinion across is there's something wrong there. Um. The next one is the disengagement of the voters and I'm wondering if that confusion and chaos on town meeting floor might be one of the factors that annoys people and frustrates them to the point where they just say, screw it, and they don't come anymore to town meeting, or they don't inform themselves, or in our case, we have some bias in our newspaper. Um, and so I think that makes people not even want to read it anymore. So, and then the third one is, I have a great deal of concern for a island like this, a rural community like this. The singular place that is in Nantucket, I'm concerned about special interest groups and their ability to have undue influence, dark money, if you will. Um. And I don't know the answer as to which form of government has a better system of checks and balances to guard against that, but, um, that's something I've been thinking about.
Okay, so.
Um, a lot of things that I've been thinking about recently, um, special interests is one, uh, that's just a a factor in, especially in an annual town and town meeting form because uh, ultimately it's going to come down to your wallet on many things and people are going to show up in mass when there's consequential decisions. And that's what government is. It's consequential decisions. It is about your livelihoods ultimately. Um. Another thing is just the logistical side. Jill, you've been talking about and I heard more about it, how we have a lot of citizens' work warrant articles that come through. And the problem is that the wheel of legislation is spinning and it's spinning off these bylaws. However, the executive side doesn't really know what to do or make of it. Okay, so it's sort of this logistical problem. And if you look at Barnstable and you look at what the, um, Bridgewater Town Manager said, he spends a lot of time telling or educating the legislation on what they can do, what is feasible for them to legislate. Okay, those things, those two bodies, the executive and the legislative have to work together. Okay, those things, those two bodies, the executive and the legislative, have to work together so that the bylaws go through. Okay, and that's the, that's the point that we're trying to get to. Like, we need to get into the nuts and bolts of how government functions. Basically, like, we have to have that basic knowledge. The regulatory bodies versus the legislative bodies, what do they do? What is their fundamental purpose? That's what we need to, like, establish. Okay, because we came and have discussion of what government is without that basic knowledge. That's what's going on in Attica. You've got legislation over here peddling furiously, and the executive like, well, I just give up. There's a bunch of bylaws. What, what are we going to do? So that's my frustration, but. But how do you do it? I mean, how do you do it? Literally, how do you do it?
Jill, you have any comments?
My biggest, I am utterly fascinated by our formal government. I think it's very interesting. But it feels antiquated to me in the age of technology. And so my biggest, in my biggest issue with that is, it, everything's become very confusing. I know all of you all are involved, but most people really don't know how our form of government works. We have a, I would say, renewed population here. We don't have the older population that we used to have. We have a new population of young husbands, and they're very different and not connected to the past. Their parents weren't involved in all town meetings. So we've lost that continuity, that connection to it. And then I think people give up because it's really confusing. And I mean, there are times on town meeting floor where the select board's confused, the finance committee's confused, the planning board's confused. And some of that's process and how that's working. But then, then that makes me nervous, right? That people are vote, they don't know how they're voting. Carolyn alluded to that earlier. But that's happening a lot. We also get some articles that are really, really, going back to Bo's point. They're heavy laden with some serious regulations that, okay, they're not going to be enforced. But people stand up and making an emotional appeal. And then they don't realize when they go home, like, oh, you just legislated that you only get four lights outside your house. And a lot of people don't actually want to be honest on town meeting floor, in my view. And some of those people that don't want to be honest are elected. They don't actually want to say directly how this affects you. Sometimes they do, but often they're just like, oh, we're just going to let people talk and debate. And get out the wiggles, right? And then we're just going to let you vote. And I'm like, you've left people actually thinking that this is a good piece of legislation for themselves. And it's actually going to hurt them. And that, so that, anyway, you can tell I'm getting worked up about it. Like, that is what really makes me mad. Because then to Bo's point, there's no accountability at the box for any of these elected members. And I think, you know, should we go to a town council? I actually was very, very much interested in not staggering all these people and how that works, so that there is accountability. And I am very concerned about that, but that, everyone's like, just, it's like governed by obfuscation. It's frustrating.
Donna, do you, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, um, as a non-voting taxpayer, it, it seems that we are disassociated from the annual town meetings. I did live on island for a couple of years a while ago, and I did attend a couple of, um. A couple of ATMs, but, um, it's been a while. I'm now non-voting taxpayer. And I don't feel like I'm, our group is part of the process at all. So we would look forward to a, a greater participation somehow, in some fashion. And the other thing, as far as, as far as everybody else, I think with town council. Folks would come to attend topics that are of great interest to them. And then therefore, they would hopefully be informed. And would be advocates for or against that particular possible legislation or topic, whatever. So you'd have a better informed citizenship, citizenry.
Thanks, Donna.
Yeah, I have, Anthony, I, I don't have the grid, but here's some ideas. And I think, as Jill mentioned, there are many problems with the annual town meeting. I believe that did be very correct. It's an antiquated system. It's been around hundreds of years. We do have a changing demographic on the island. I think there's a mismatch a bit in that. But away from the problems with the existing thing, I think there's some other whys. Obviously, we've talked about enfranchising two different groups, the immigrant population, maybe document challenged. And then the non-voting taxpayers. Decision-making efficiency, we've addressed that quite a bit. I think one thing we haven't talked about directly, indirectly, we've touched on is the management of the town. By the select board. To many people outside of it, it's an opaque situation. And there may not be as direct control as some might like. A new form of government may make, may make the management of the town and all of its operations more direct. More efficient and more transparent. I think a new form of government may bring greater expertise to the politicians making the decisions. I think we've talked before about grant writing, federal and state. That this may allow, a change of government may allow greater access to that, that form of capital. This form of government may, I think, attract more politicians to, which, and I use that word. And I guess, more attract people into the government than otherwise. And I think the whole thing would increase transparency.
Lucy, have you, under the public, have any, just to make any comment?
So if you go to the council, like Anthony was just saying, that if you go to the council to ask your questions, you know. But you don't have a vote. Like, if the council are doing something, can you change there? Is that how it works or?
No, well, again, I, if we're talking about going to a town, and again, Anthony, you can correct me if I say this wrong, or if I'm a Curtis. My, my understanding is the way it works is, if we were to convert, a lot of, a lot of, we would have to go into doing that. You would end up with nine or eleven or however many town councillors. If you approached a meeting and had a complaint or a suggestion or what have you, you would be dealing with them. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have a vote just to say, well, I'm, I'm not going to vote for this thing, or I'll withhold my vote if you don't do what I want. I don't know, is that, is that a fair description? I mean, I don't, the, the, the leverage with a town council for citizens to get bylaw changes or legislation. I don't know what, I don't know what those things are. Is it, does it require, you know, do most towns require five percent of their population signatures? Or if you're trying, if you're trying to get something that the, the, the town council is to act upon, it's a referendum.
Well, there, there's two. There's a, there's a, there are petitions to put items before the council, right? There's a council, and then there are, uh, uh, referendums which require the council to put something on the ballot for the voters to then all vote on. And there are, you have, may have different thresholds for those two types of activities. So one is, I want the council to pass a law. One is, I want the council to put something on the, on the, um, the ballot for the voters to enact.
What's, what's the first one called again?
You know, terms, well, generally initiative, it's called an initiative petition.
Petition. Petition or initiative, right? So referendum is one.
Man, did you have a question? Could you identify yourself, please?
Suzanne Girardi, I was just, a clarification. If we went to town council, that just eliminates all town meeting, we still have select board, we still have town manager, that structure remains the same. Is that correct?
No, you then, well, you end up with a town council that would replace the select board, and that town council becomes a legislative body for the town. So if you do away with a thousand people showing up in the gym, because those people would now elect the, whoever made it, nine or ten or eleven. You still have a town man, at, at least the way I conceive it, we still have a town manager.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
We're, we're very relaxed here, Anthony. I, I try to only gradually keep people under control, so.
So I, I just wanted, because it was, it was very good, sort of going around the table, hearing from everyone. I want to just quickly, kind of sort of recap some of what I hear and make sure that we're all on the same page. And then think about, in the last, I think you said, you, you're going to five fifteen, think about what do you want to do, sort of, to go forward? So, so I, I'm going to re-dist, we're going to send this out again, sort of, so I've added some items to the, the matrix that weren't on there before. Particularly around logistical issues. It sounds like there's some confusion among, uh, existing town, uh, officials. Like, I, I heard that there could be confusion among the select board, the planning board, concerns of undue influence. It sounds like that was, or concerns related to changing of government. And then what I heard, and, and I'd love to, this is not sort of going to be a round robin, but i- if, I'm curious if the, if the group sort of agrees. I guess what I heard is a lot of concerns about the legislative body perhaps not being representative. And being poorly prepared, and that preparedness relating to things like voter apathy. Voter disengagement during the, the sort of length of the meeting. And this idea that there's a change in the population, so there's a, the break of continuity from what the traditions had been around town meeting. And those, you know, that's a, that's a fairly sort of discreet topic. That's, that's, here are some issues with how the town meeting actually does represent the will of the community. And I'm curious, I sort of reframed it a little bit. I'm curious how the board reacts to that framing.
I like them.
Yeah, yeah, let's move on it.
And sort of having that, and, and, and Mel or, or Pat, please jump in here. I guess that, I think that sort of, knowing that that's sort of a single encapsulated issue. To have that meeting, whether it's one meeting or multiple, about representative town, uh, town government. If that's, if that, what was just said is the problem, then that might be a starting point to think about. Does representative town government fix that problem, exacerbate it, or leave it the same? And that could be a relatively, a place to make a relatively discreet decision about whether or not you, you'd want it sort of explored more. If, if it doesn't fix that central, those central issues, then maybe it's something that you don't want to pursue further.
Well, I, I would just jump in, I, I think, as Bo mentioned, I, I think we do need to spend some time. Examining representative town meeting. But even, even before that, I think it might be worthwhile to sort of fill out our notes or our sort of research. And make sure that we understand the pluses and minuses of a city manager as well, just so that. If you will, on our, in our report, there's a page that says, you know, we've looked at city man, city, I'm sorry, city council, mayor. Form, and this feeds us sort of the strengths and weaknesses and characteristics. And we're kind of leaving that out of our, well, maybe not. Maybe, maybe the conversation will show that there's some attractiveness there. But it seems to me that, that to fulfill our, our, what we've, what we've represented to the select board. We ought to look at all four forms, at least on a sort of, you know. Simple basis or base, a high-level basis, before we dig into representative town meeting and, you know, town council some more.
Um, I, I guess, Joe, is the select board expecting a report from us? To say, okay, this we've studied, and I don't know, we haven't defined. How many forms of government, again, are we going to review? Is it just the town representative town meeting and then council? Do we have to report that? Should we report back to them and saying, these are the reasons why we have chosen whatever we choose? Pros and cons, and we have chosen this. Is that something they're expecting?
I think they're expecting us to review all forms of government available to municipalities here in Massachusetts. And not simply follow the letter of the, where the article was originally written, which was leaping to, if you will, the town council. Now, again, Joe Grau speaking, I don't think we've got it right in the encyclopedia on representative town government. Or, you know, mayor, city council. But I think we need to sort of say, well, th- these are the basic characteristics of those, and the group has, you know, reviewed them. And for these particular reasons, we're focusing on, I'll say, town council, assuming that. But in theory, I suppose we could go back and say, you know, based on all this work we've done, open town meetings. Maybe it's, maybe it's the best solution for the town. I don't think you and I are going to vote that way, but, you know, maybe that, maybe that's the outcome. And then to get to your initial questions, yes, I think the select board expects a report. And then I expect us to basically come up with, you know. My, my expectation is we'll come up with a town charter that will support a conversion to town council form of government. And we're going to put it in an article in town meeting, so.
I, I watched the meeting pretty closely, two meetings, pretty closely, and they were specific pretty much about representative. And so.
They were.
Yeah. Which is the only other.
Dixon said all four, you just.
Yeah, and then Maffey at the end, like qualified his statement too.
Honestly, the only one that's, the only two that are available are representative and town council, so.
Yeah, I, I, no, I agree with that.
But to devote one meeting. And post it on the agenda and say, look, this is your time to debate, and people are going to come out and they're going to debate it. And we just have to be prepared. I think if we just do that, I don't see a problem with that, and.
What do you mean, having some public forum? You think a lot of people are showing up?
No, I mean, I think people are going to come to this, this meeting, or the, the meeting that we post that and say, you know, they're going to.
Would expect us to get public input on some of this, so.
No, I'm here. Sorry about that. Uh, no, I was just going to say, I was going to agree with Joe that I, I think the deliverable can still stay the same. But I, I think we're going to have to provide some context around that, that's very clear. And I, I think to put whatever, you know, town council charter or whatever we look at at the end. Is going to need that description of what, what the other forms would or wouldn't have done, and why we put together what we did. And I think Curtis has said it pretty elegantly before, where if we get to the conclusion that town council is not the way to go, we simply report. We can't provide that deliverable at the end for these reasons, and you provide a similar kind of context. But I, I, I think that's kind of the exercise we've been taxed with, but I, I personally think that makes some sense. That's it.
Thanks, Jeff. Anthony, for you?
Yeah, just, um. Uh, I guess something sort of, I guess in the way of a suggestion maybe is. You know, I think it's, I often find it's helpful to get some momentum, and, and it did sound like sort of, through the exercise, we identified sort of, I guess, what's the biggest burning issue? The executive branch, where you talk about mayors, town, town manager, city managers, mayor, so forth. There are different, number of different ways to structure that. And in fact, if you, and I'm not saying that the committee will take the count, the town, the town council route. There's a town council right that's similar, has perhaps similar, uh, powers to the, um. To the select board in terms of appointing a manager, appointing a, a town administrator, you know, there's no different terms for it. To run the day-to-day operations while still being the policy, or subsuming some of the policy authority that, um, the, the select boards would, would have. So, um, I'm you saying all that to say, if you know you have a big issue and you want to spend some time sort of fleshing it out. It may help you sort of roll into the next issue. Because it's not, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not saying not to look at other forums. You could have a, if you go the council right, you can have a council and a mayor, or a council and a manager. It, they, they may naturally, there, there's potential for natural flow into the other, as you build momentum to flow into the other, um. Matters that will be of issue as you draft a charter and things of that nature.
Anthony, do we want to adjourn at this point, or did you, did you have anything else you think at this stage?
So, uh, that's, I think we did, we wanted to get through those sort of, uh, uh, that problem statement. I think the next thing, you, you know, you guys had a number of meetings without us. One of the things we, uh, we'd love to do, we kind of did a little bit today, is then look at what, what we currently know about the forms. And do they answer the questions? And maybe start with the most pressing questions. You can go through all, we can go through all the forms. As you're still gathering information. That, that sort of would, in our minds, would be the next step.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Why don't, why don't we do that, why don't we adjourn for the day, but, um, Anthony, I'll, you and I ought to chat, um. In the interim, um, maybe Carolyn would be like a, a part of that conversation, and. Um, we can talk about forming the agenda for our next meeting, which will be two weeks from tonight.
We talked about that.
Oh, sure.
I mean, do we have to meet every two weeks, it's just now, it's a town meeting, actually, is, is tricky for. It's a lot, so I don't know if we can, like, take one week off, either right before or right after would probably be even better, but. Um. In fact, I don't even know if it's, yeah.
We should do it in two weeks, and then you might skip the town meeting.
Maybe we'll have one in May or something, cause.
Well, this town meeting is what, the fifth, no.
Seventh, and it might go three nights.
Really, three nights?
Well, I don't know, it's two or three, it could.
Well, how about one more meeting in two weeks?
Yeah, well, we, we could certainly.
The election's two weeks after that, too, so, it's, you know, they kind of like to not do anything.
But I don't think we should go away for a month waiting for that.
I think we should continue.
Okay, so let, let's shoot for the seventeenth, but maybe I could ask everybody to look at their calendars over the next, the, the. From the seventeenth out through May, and if there are Wednesdays or, you know, weeks where you, this is gonna be tough because you're involved in. And Jill would be involved in the town meeting, um. You know, we can figure out how, some other way to, to, to schedule in the, the meeting after that.
Okay, so we'll do the seventeenth.
Um, I, Wednesday, it'll be Wednesday, three to five o'clock, so it's the seventeenth, three o'clock. And, and Jeremy will, will, I'm Jeremy, sorry, um, Anthony, will, um. I'll connect with you the next day or so, we can sort of flesh out the agenda, um, and I'll share it with the, with the committee.
If it's helpful, I'll send an updated version of that chart as well, just with something.
Great. All righty, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second, second.
Curtis?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Carolyn? Bo?
Hi.
Jill?
And I.
Thanks.
Anthony, uh, Anthony, Mel, and Patricia, thank you so much for sitting through the meeting, I know it was kind of squished at the end, but. We'll, uh.
We are learning something.
We'll be a little more organized next time.
No, but you're already organizing us, just in those questions and the, and the, uh, the last couple of minutes here, it feels like it's coming into a. Into a form, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Let's see, down the road. To the next meeting.
I might have to watch it, but. I wanna go in person, but later, they're not bringing up this terrible stuff till later.